Mrs. Costa, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Will you please join me in standing for a moment of silence and the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we'll go into good and welfare, and I'll ask anyone who wants to address the school committee to please approach the podium and state your name and address. For the record, we will give you five minutes, and we ask you to keep your comments in good decorum. Does anybody want to address the school committee? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go into recognition and recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the school committee. I have two announcements to make. The first is the annual back-to-school backpack and school supply celebration will be held on Saturday, August 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon time. And it's going to be here, weather permitting. It will be out on the lawn between Hamlet Middle School and Villanova Middle School. This will be the second year in a row that we've elected to use this location for the celebration. I know last year, we had hundreds of families that came through. They were very appreciative of the supplies that we were able to hand out and provide to them, the backpacks. There was also, and I'm not sure if that's, if it's this year, I'm not sure, Kim, if you know. I know, didn't we provide food last time around? I'm not sure if there's going to be, if that opportunity will be there, probably not. But I know that in the past, we've also had various community organizations that have been at the celebration. So I would imagine that they'll be here for that celebration on the 27th as well. So looking forward to some, we're inviting, you know, all of our families, students and their families out. Again, it's Saturday, August 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, right here at the middle school complex. I'll be sending out, and the principals will also be sending out to their families, notification of the celebration as well. So we're looking forward to that. And the second announcement I'd like to make is our annual administrative retreat is going to be held next Tuesday, August 16th, right here at Hamlet Middle School, from 8:30 to 3:30 p.m. This administrative retreat includes all of our directors, all of our principals, and our assistant principals, our 10-month assistant principals are invited to attend this as well. And it's an opportunity for us to review the goals for the upcoming school year. It's also an opportunity for us, as the committee is aware, over the last three years, we've been doing learning walks, conducting learning walks. So we're going to be reviewing the data that we've collected last year from the learning walks as we create our look-for's this coming school year. So that's just a small sample of what we're going to be doing on Tuesday. We're also going to be engaging in some leadership activities and some team-building activities as well. So it's really a good opportunity for the leadership team to come together prior to the school year and get ready so that we're all on the same page, so that we can have a great 22, 23 school year. With that, Mr. Chairman and members of the school committee, that's all I have for my recognitions and announcements.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and account, and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll go into reapproval of minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the July 20th, 2022 closed meeting minutes.
Make the motion.
The motion made by Mrs. Kepiscus, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Ms. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Abstain.
Vice Chair Burke.
Abstain.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the July 20th, 2022 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Abstain.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion, we'll go into the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does any school committee member want to pull out any items for discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
I'd like to pull out the field trip and conference requests for a question.
Okay.
Mr. Perrier. Before I ask my question, both these field trips, I think, were well worth the students attending and the teacher attending. I also thought it was very proactive of the automotive staff to attend the electric car workshop. But I do question, and I was a little confused looking at the dates. So I just want some explanation. I think I know where we're headed, but I think it should be said, so.
Okay, well, you have two field trips requests in front of you. We can start with the FBLA trip. The school committee did approve this trip back in May. I believe it was the May 25th, May 25th meeting where you approved the FBLA conference. But at that time, the student requisition had not been made out yet. So once we got the final approvals on the student requisitions and the final flight plans for them, this is just the requisition coming back for that trip that you had already approved. So at the time, we didn't have the student flights pegged yet. But we did indicate in the paperwork that it would all be student-funded. The students did raise those funds. And now this is the check with those student-raised funds that will be going back to Ann Croft to reimburse her for the outlay of the flights. The other one here is the one for the Career and Tech Center in relation to the Switch Lab Workshop. What happened with that was, was just really a matter of timing. Unfortunately, we only had one meeting in July, and this missed the meeting in June. So we were unable to get it in front of the school committee at the time, before the conference actually went off. Per the bylaws, the school committee approves all the overnight field trips. So that's why you're seeing it this evening.
So we're approving trips that have occurred.
For this one, yes. The first one, you already approved that. That's just, again, that was just follow-up for the trip that you already approved. But yes, for the second one, you are approving a trip that already occurred, correct?
It would be very inconvenient if we did it, would you say?
Well, it would be inconvenient for the two people who are looking for reimbursement on their trip. Yes, correct. It would be very inconvenient for them.
Any other comments, questions for Mr. Perrier? Dr. McGee, roll call on the consent agenda.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll ask Dr. McGee to give us his superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. You have on the agenda here, the first item is the personnel appointments and changes. If you look through this rather extensive list, I mean, although we've had some longer ones, you'll see that we have, we are in the process of appointing a good number of certified staff filling positions that have been vacant from the, from the, from the end of the school year, from June. Just to give you a sense of the number of positions that we have filled and the number of positions that are still vacant at this point in time. If you, I'll start with administrative positions. We do not have any vacant positions currently. We have filled four of those administrative positions thus far this summer. So we're in a great position in terms of our administrators, our administrators, principals, and assistant principals. We are ready to go. The Windsocket Teachers Guild, which would be teachers and staff, we have, at this point, 22 vacancies. And we're in the process of interviewing. And there will be, in the coming days, there will be staff who will be offered positions upon the interviews. We have a total of 27 that we've filled this summer thus far, and those are, again, teachers and staff. Paraprofessionals, we have 17 vacancies. We've filled a total of seven paraprofessional positions this summer. And our local 1137 members, we have 11 vacancies. We've filled one thus far this year. And the 1137, that would be maintenance and custodian primarily. We also, that is also includes some secretaries. However, the vacancies primarily come out of facilities and maintenance. So that's my, the first agenda item under my report. Any questions respect to that?
Vice Chair Burke.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know how you can answer this, but, you know, we, obviously, we all were looking at this, and we were struck by the amount of resignations.
Right, yeah.
Is there any reasons that someone has come across, or is this natural?
Yeah, I think it varies. I mean, some of these resignations are not necessarily their teaching position, but just a position, like a stipend position that they might hold. Some of those are in the honor society. We have, if you go down to, you know, for example, another example, another example of that would be Title I building level, apparently, is on, you know, that individual is still, still has her teaching position. But then there are others who have resigned their teaching position. And I, although I haven't spoken to each of these people, you know, I know in some instances, people are offered jobs closer to where they live is one. And in other, in other situations, you know, they can make more money in another district. So those are typically the reasons that we find people leave.
Yep. And we want to, we want to hold on to as many.
We do, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Then my next agenda item is school safety procedures update. So just to let the committee know that we have a school safety procedure meeting, which is scheduled for Monday at 9:00 at Hamlet Middle School. In that meeting, will be attended by Chief Oats. We're hoping that a representative from the Windsocket Fire Department, I know Chief Chatra or a representative should be at that meeting. Mr. Natariani, myself, our administrators, we've invited to that meeting. Chairman Borger.
And Mr. Leclerc.
And Mr. Leclerc will also be in attendance at that meeting. And we're just, we're at the, the purpose of that meeting is to meet with Chief Oats and Chief Chatra and our school resource officers to review our plans, our emergency plans for this upcoming school year. Mr. Natariani and I have worked together this summer to update the template for our emergency plans that each of our principals are directed to fill out, which are really specific to each building. But the template is the same. So we'll be reviewing that at that meeting with the, with the building principals. And we'll also be, just be talking about security and safety overall across the district in general, just reminding administrators, you know, of our protocols and our procedures, you know, so that we ensure the safety of our students, staff, and visitors in our buildings, all of our buildings across the district. So that meeting will occur on Monday. We have had some meetings. We had a couple of meetings since the late spring with Chief Oats and with a representative from the fire department. But we specifically met with Chief Oats to talk about a variety of safety trainings. I know we've talked in the past about Alice training, and there are a variety of trainings that sort of fall under the umbrella of Alice. So Alice is just one specific type, but we're going to be talking about that as well as we move into the school year. One of, one of our goals as we, you know, start the school year is to provide our teachers and staff with the safety training that they normally receive through the emergency plans that each school develops. But I also like to provide an opportunity for our resource officers and even some members of the Windsocket Police Department to maybe have, you know, meetings at our individual schools versus having everybody together to talk about safety and safety protocols and procedures. So it's important that, you know, we've been doing work along the way. The work never stops, really, you know, evaluating our emergency plans and making sure that if there are any things that we need to make changes to or modifications to, we make them. If you recall, last year, the governor and the, the Commissioner of Education, Infante Green, had instructed school districts by way of the superintendents that they establish the checklist, the safety checklist, which is only, is only mandated every three years for school districts to do. Again, that's something we do every year, but that was something that we normally would have done it. We did it a little earlier this year. It was, it was conducted prior to the end of the school year, so we've done that. So we'll be reviewing that as well as our emergency plans to make sure, you know, that we're ready to go and all of our campuses are safe and secure for the start of the school year. Any questions regarding that agenda item?
Just remind, just remembering that last time we met with Chief Oats, he and his officers and our resource officers were going to put together the plan in terms of training. In other words, we've had training, but now I guess these would be adapted to the current situations that we see in this country. And that training, that's what I'm expecting next Mondays, for him to discuss what he's planning to do in terms of training our folks.
Right, yes. Yeah, so I, it's going to be a very important meeting, and it's going to be an opportunity for, you know, for all of our administrators and, you know, the police and our SROs to come together prior to the start of the school year and, you know, just as a group, review everything.
When did you say and what time?
It's going to be on Monday, next Monday, and it's going to be at 9:00 at McPhee.
McPhee?
I'm sorry, Hamlet, Hamlet Middle School.
Right.
The third agenda item that I'd like to discuss is the Nonviolence Institute update. So if you recall, last year, as a, as a result of, you know, the violence, the fighting that had occurred in the district, specifically at the high school and the middle schools, I had reached out to a gentleman who was the executive director of the Nonviolence Institute out of Providence, Cedric, I believe his last name is Dempsey. But we had had some meetings. He had come in, and he's met with myself, some members of the, of the school committee, as well as administrators and directors here in the school department to talk about how they could provide some supports to us, to our, to our students, to our staff, and just to the community in general around nonviolence and establishing environments here in the district where students are taught how to really resolve conflicts. So I've, myself and Gigi DiBello, who is the coordinator of our Project Aware Grant, our mental health grant, have been meeting with them. The last meeting I had with them, they put together memorandum to work with us, to partner with us. And we're looking to reach out to the Health Equity Zone to see if we can get some funding through the Health Equity Zone to provide us with some support through that as well. There is, there are some funds that are still available through the Project Aware Grant that we could use to work with and to partner with the Nonviolence Institute. So we're in the process of working through that memorandum of understanding with them. In September, probably the last meeting in September, I've invited members of the Nonviolence Institute to the school committee meeting so that the school committee can sort of interact with them and talk about what the plans are for the year when it comes to providing supports, you know, to our students and to our staff around conflict resolution and nonviolence. So we've been working really hard behind the scenes with them to, as we start the school year and as we, you know, progress through the school year, to minimize the amount of physical violence that we've seen last year, which really, much of it, I think, is, and the Nonviolence Institute agrees, is really a result of COVID and a result of, you know, students not being around one another. And just, and it's not just here in Windsocket. They, you know, they work with districts across the state, specifically the urban districts, and they see it in those districts. I will say this, one of the things that they were impressed with Windsocket is our, the lengths we've gone to support our students through mental health first aid, through our peer mentors that we have at the high school. If you recall, last year, 50 of our high school students were trained, the only high school in the state to have trained their students, 50 of them, who are our student leaders, who are peer mentors, in teen mental health first aid. So they were very impressed with what we've done and are doing to try to, you know, create opportunities here across the district, but especially at the secondary level, to promote, you know, the opportunities for our students to interact respectfully with one another and to support one another. So that is, I'll have more information, as I said. They'll be here in September, and we'll, you know, we'll have a presentation in terms of what they're going to be providing and what that partnership will look like with the school district.
Will you be putting them on the agenda, not just in?
I will, they'll be on the agenda, yes.
Because it'd be better than just being in.
Oh, no, they, they'll be, they'll, no, they'll be on the agenda.
Fine.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Costa.
So we did a really good job getting peer specialists within the high school. Now, is there a way that we could try to implement that for maybe, like, our middle schoolers? And then maybe, I was thinking, maybe try to do it with our fifth graders? Because it's not just middle school and high school that have mental health issues. It does go down to elementary schools, too. So I was thinking, maybe we could try to implement it in those as well?
Well, we're certainly going to talk about it and set up a plan. The MOU that we're looking to sign with the Nonviolence Institute is broken down by three, in three, over three years. So the first year is really focusing on the high school, but still planning on the second year, going to the middle schools and then the elementary schools. Because part of the conversations I had with them, and they agreed, is that it's great to have these supports in place at the high school, but it really needs to start. You know, when you're teaching nonviolence and you're teaching the principles of Martin Luther King Jr. and you're teaching students how to resolve conflict, that really needs to be learned in kindergarten. And I will say, you know, and again, one of the, one of the things that they were impressed with was the restorative practices that we utilize across the district. They were very impressed with that. And that really is sort of a piece of that that we're using in the elementary grades. But we still, our plan is still to add more of this, you know, nonviolence education to those, to the students there as well. So that will be part of the plan.
Okay, great.
Dr. McGee, I think, and just following up on what Ms. Costa said, I think we should offer this also for the parents. I think parents need to be involved. We're going to go back to the little ones. I don't care what grade you are or what age you are. We need the parents' involvement, because it all begins at home. So I would think we need to, whatever plans we come up with, a portion of that has to deal with parents.
Absolutely.
You're right. It does, and it will. You know, again, I just, I just want the committee and the community to know that, you know, the things that happened last year, they're not just in the past, and we've sort of forgotten about them, and we're moving forward. We realize that we had issues, and we've been working hard, and we're going to continue to work hard to try to resolve those issues as we move forward. And the Nonviolence Institute, they're very well-respected.
Yes.
Nationally, and especially in Rhode Island. So, you know, I felt as though at the time, it was prudent to reach out for some help, because we can't always do it ourselves. And while we do have some resources here to support our students and our staff and our community, we don't have everything. So I'm very hopeful that this partnership will provide us with, you know, what we're looking for.
And when they, when they came in, they were very impressive, frankly.
They were, well, they have a body of work. They, you know, it's not like it's a group that's coming in that, that, you know, they're just coming in trying to get your business. I mean, they, they have a body of work. They have a resume, and so they have.
Any other comments and questions for Dr. McGee? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the school subcommittee reports, looking at the policy subcommittee update. I'll ask Mrs. Kepiscus and Vice Chair Burke to give us that update.
Please.
I thought so, but I like to check. The policy subcommittee met on August 4th at 10:00 a.m. here in Hamlet Middle School. We discussed a variety of policies. The first one monopolized most of our meeting, which is a discussion and review of the medical marijuana policy that's been put forth by the Rhode Island Department of Health. And every district has been mandated to adopt a policy with regard to the use of medical marijuana in our schools. I'm not going to get into tremendous detail like I usually do, because it's a policy that didn't come, it's not coming out to the school committee yet. I'll provide as many details as you'd like, if you want to ask questions. But quite frankly, I think our discussion at the policy meeting created more questions than it did anything else. More questions that we ask our lawyers to ask at RIDE and at the Rhode Island Department of Health. For example, our school nurses have expressed an unwillingness to distribute the marijuana, and they are charged under this policy to be in charge of the distribution of marijuana. Or if they refuse to participate, they must refuse for all students, not selectively for some students, which means we're designating, parents are designating either themselves or another adult to act as what the nurse would under the policy, to make the marijuana available and distribute it to the child in accordance with the policy. That raises some issues. The nurses have issues because medical marijuana is not an FDA-approved drug. The attorneys basically say they think that's probably a non-issue, but the bottom line is, we're not sure whether or not there's coverage for the nurses if they distribute medical marijuana and something goes wrong in terms of professional liability. I know the nurses have expressed concerns about that, as well as they have concerns about putting their own licenses at risk for distributing it, a non-FDA-approved drug. There's also questions whether or not the trust would cover any liability that may arise under the medical marijuana policy. There's issues regarding how we deal with students at the high school in particular, who are over the age of 18, who no longer have legal guardians, who can make those decisions for them. They make them themselves. The policy is clear that you can't carry the medical marijuana through the building yourselves. The question is then, is the school nurse willing to take custody of it and keep it under a locked box in the, in the school nurse's office? And they have some concerns around that as well. So this, as you can see, there's a lot more questions than there are resolution. No question, it's opening a Pandora's box. Our attorneys seem to think the number of students involved will be quite low. I do not know whether or not that's going to play out. Supposedly, there's only about 30 minors in the, just in the state of Rhode Island that have medical marijuana permits. But of course, our concern is 29 of them might be in Windsocket. So we have to address it, the bottom line. So that is not coming forward to you until those questions are answered. The second policy we discussed was around tutoring, a tutoring policy. We currently have one. It was basically for discussion to talk about rewording it. Tutoring is designed essentially for homebound students or hospital-bound students. Students who are unable to attend school, we are supposed to require, we are required by law to provide them with a minimum number of tutoring hours. The discussion was around where that tutoring would take place, in hospitals, in homes, or at other agreed-upon places. Because essentially, the special ed director in particular, with regard to her students, is telling us she's unable to find people who are willing to act as tutors in the home, especially with regard to COVID. So that's an ongoing issue and an ongoing discussion. There should be a draft policy coming back to us at our next meeting. That's what we discussed. Another item we discussed was the campus building rental policy. Basically, Mr. Natariani and Mr. Perrier reviewed the current policy that we have, set up the rental agreement. We reviewed that. We reviewed the list of rental charges. We're going to hold it for the next policy meeting because it's closed, but it's not exactly set yet. We also changed the way we're handling policy meetings. We're discussing no more than three policies per meeting to try to keep the time for our meetings reasonable. We are discussing as well items that are coming. It's a preview of the policies you can expect to see coming in the forthcoming meetings. It's a preview of the policies you can expect to see coming in the forthcoming meetings. And those are pretty much developed by the directors and administrators through their meetings with Dr. McGee. They're going to bring forth whatever concerns they have to address policies, as well as our ongoing process of removing all sections of the policy manual, some of which, as Caroline was kind enough to remind us all, predated her birth. So we are going to be eliminating the policies that are so old as to be irrelevant, updating them as we're going forward. And we have exactly those items on our agenda under new business item number three, removing sections of the old policy manual that have either been updated or simply no longer relevant and no longer necessary. With regard to previews of policies to come, one of the items that has come up is electronic devices, particularly with regard to phones. And whether we're going to develop a policy, in particular with regard to the use of the phones on buses and in classrooms by students, led to a discussion of whether or not staff should be using cellphones in the classroom as well. And we went over the fact that we currently do have a policy with regard to electronic devices, which is 100% in accord with state law, which prohibits the use of electronic devices in the classroom in schools, doesn't address buses. At this point, we're not anticipating making significant changes to it, because basically, the policy is exactly what we want, a ban. It also sets up consequences as to what happens if you are caught using a phone in it that does not agree with our policy use. The real problem seems to be enforcement, as opposed to a problem with the policy itself. I don't believe we intend to extend our policy beyond what it already exists with regard to buses. The problem is, as usual, there's some inconsistency. Some bus monitors are not permitting use, some bus monitors are. Some teachers are permitting use, limited use, some are not. The bottom line is, what we need to make sure that everyone understands, parents and guardians included, that you should not be using that phone to text Tommy to find out what he wants for supper. I still believe as a parent, if you have an emergency at home and you need to reach your child, you should not be calling him or her on a cellphone in classrooms. You should be reaching out to the front office or whatever school you're in and contacting the front office, because then the child can be pulled out of class, told whatever the emergency is. I think that's a much better and more adult way to deal with it. But essentially, I don't think there's going to be a lot of changes based on our discussion. Our next meeting of policy is scheduled for Thursday, September 29th, 2022, at 4:00 p.m. here at Hamlet in room 124. I'm told the room is clear. And our meeting was adjourned at 12:04 p.m. We met for a little over two hours.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Vice Chair Burke, do you have, do you want to add anything?
Nope.
Okay.
She covered it all.
Yes, she did.
And then some.
I guess, I guess, when I look at the policies for the phones, it's definitely an enforcement issue in my mind, and I think that's what has to be looked at. And, you know, because like Mrs. Kepiscus says, some teachers are enforcing it, some aren't. And I think we need that consistency, because it's becoming a hot topic. I mean, I guess we had Dartmouth, now we have Springfield, that just banned, just banned the phones yesterday, as they're going into their year. And I'm sure this is, we're going to hear a lot more about that in our own district as time goes on. So I think we got to be prepared, and we've got to be prepared with what procedures we're going to put in place in terms of monitoring that policy. Anyone else?
If I may add one thing with regard to the phones. We discussed, in case any was interested, we discussed whether or not we should adopt a protocol essentially for classrooms as opposed to a policy that says how the phones will be secured. If students come to school with a phone, and we don't want them to have phones in the classroom, are we going to take custody of them? And I know we already have some schools in district that have the over-the-closet-door shoe hanger thing, that they tell the students, put your phone in the shoe thing, you're assigned a number, you put it in there, it's under lock and key during the day. There are problems with that, because it's a matter of security. What if Johnny puts in a track phone and walks out with an iPhone 13 or whatever the most current number is? Or in my case, as my daughter would say, put your crappy Samsung in and walk out with a new Note 22, because I have the crappiest Samsung that still works. But essentially, that's a problem. Then we talked about these pouches, that lock, they have a magnetic lock on them. And essentially, you put the phone in the pouch, and then the phone is on the child, but inaccessible during the day, at least in theory. My daughter told me that, go on TikTok and watch this video, actually several videos, and TikTok teaches them exactly how you can get around this by dropping a fake phone, a burner phone, into the pouch and keeping your real phone in your pocket or your backpack. Or if you have a purse that has a magnet that closes it, that is the exact same magnet that locks this pouch. So you can take your purse and unlock the pouch and access your phone. And so if you want to know any ways around any of these policies that we also discussed this, watch TikTok videos, because they're going to tell you any way around any policy that we create. It's already been passed, and it's already been worked around. So I think really, the only thing we can do is stick with the policy that we have, prohibit it, and we just have to rely on staff to appropriately enforce it. And I understand, they don't want to be the police, I get that, that's not what their job is. But if you have an issue with students using phones in your classroom, the policy's there, it's up to you to enforce it. Unfortunately, that's the only thing I can say.
Right, correct. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke, I was expecting this. I was expecting you.
I should say nothing, but, you know, the use of cellphones today is also a cultural and a societal issue that goes beyond classrooms. And I think a lot of, a lot of power and pressure enters the classroom from this cultural and societal use. I mean, everybody's got a smartphone, right? And we've also talked about smartphones dealing with, you know, the size. But several people that I can see right now also have it on their wrists. So do we start taking watches, wristwatch off students and taking them away? It's a can of worms. It really is a can of worms. I mean, having been a teacher dealing with this over the years, it's a challenge. It's a challenge, and I have a lot of sympathy for myself as a teacher for trying to enforce this. I can only say from experience that the shoe tree thing did work in my school, in my classroom. It did work for several years. But I can also see the problems with that, too. But somehow, the use of cellphones goes beyond just the classroom. As someone said to me, if a parent cannot get in touch with their student anytime they want during the day, that's going to be a problem. And we have to address that, as well as the students' use. And we also are now living in a world of technology where everything's on the cellphone. It's a computer, it's a computer. And people find so many uses for it, so. But that's it, I said too much.
It'll be very interesting as to how we see the district implementing procedures to either ban the phones and how this is going to go. So stay tuned. Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the policy subcommittee update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into unfinished business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 23-03 for athletic supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, this, this motion is to take it off the table, because we had tabled this. Do we have a second for the removal from the table?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclair. Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Okay, and we have before us bid 23-03 Athletic Supplies. Mr. Perrier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of the school committee is the yearly athletic supplies bid and the four winning vendors that responded. This is a collection of materials that the athletics program for One Socket will need throughout the year, uniforms, equipment, so on and so forth. This is what we'll be looking at to get us through the upcoming school year.
Any comments? I know we had discussed this somewhat at the last meeting. Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to remove from the table a discussion and approval on bid 23-04 Athletic Medical Supplies. Do we have a second to remove from the table?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclair. We have before us 23-04, Mr. Perrier.
This is the Athletic Medical Supplies Bid. We separate this out from this, the regular medical supplies bid. We find it easier to keep those two separate, so they are routed to the proper place. But again, these are the medical supplies that the athletes will need for the upcoming school year.
Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the amendments to the Durham Bus Company contract. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Mr. Perrier. I was going to give it to you, Dr. McGee, but we'll switch it over to him.
I'll share the wealth.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of the school committee is a potential increase of payment to Durham buses coming up for the upcoming school year. We have a representative here from Durham, if you have any questions, Francisco Montenegro. So basically, due to our contract, we are, both the school and the vendor are allowed to sit down and talk about making alterations to a contract. As you know, you recently approved to move forward with one of the out-years on our Durham contract. After communicating this to Durham, they came back and had some requests, and I wanted to put this out in front of the school committee this evening. Really, I think due to both, I won't steal too much of Francisco's thunder here, but really due to increased cost of labor, as well as fuel prices, Durham is looking for a little relief as far as their contract goes for this fiscal year.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Costa.
So I know that they're looking for a little bit of financial relief. However, how are they going to, moving forward, make sure that our kids are getting to school on time and that the buses are actually showing up to pick up the students?
Let's invite Francisco up to the podium right now, and he will be able to answer any of your questions.
Thank you.
Good evening. So my name is Francisco Montero. I'm a general manager for Durham School Services in Cumberland. And just to follow up on what Mr. Perrier just presented to the committee.
Excuse me, sir, we cannot hear you. Please speak louder and into the mic, thank you.
Hello, sir. So I was saying, just to repeat what Mr. Perrier just presented to the committee, what we've been doing in order to not only line up ourselves with the competition in our area, but also to remedy with the cost of living that we have right now, we have taken certain disposition at our company in order to attract individuals to come and work for us. One of the issues that we've seen in the past is that we have had severe driver shortage. It's not just us as a bus company, but it's a nationwide problem with anyone who's involved with the transportation business. And in order to remedy that, we have decided to increase the rate of pay for our employees. When it comes to the driver, we're looking at, depending on where they are standing on the pay scale, at increase going from 12% to 16%. And when it comes to the bus monitors, the increases start at 24% and go as high at 29%. And the reason why we did that, we wanted to set Durham as the key service provider in the state. Right now, if you were to go on Indeed or any of the job platform, you will notice that the starting wage that we have for our drivers right now is the highest starting wage in Rhode Island, where we are presently starting a school bus driver at $22.75. And the reason for that is to be able to cover the need of the district. I know last year, we did run into some instances where we were unable to cover all the bus routes, not only due to the driver shortage, but also to absenteeism that were either tied to COVID illness or some folks that did not have the means to attend work because of the fact that they had to take care of someone who was ill because of COVID. In the big scheme of things, as we stand right now, we are ready to start the school year with full coverage in One Socket. And I know that's something that is very dear to Mr. Nodriani, because we speak about that quite often. And this year, I can say that we will not be running into the same problem that we had last year.
Mrs. Costa.
Okay, I mean, obviously, we'll just have to see it. It just was very concerning, because I know personally, myself, with my children, I've dealt a lot with the buses not showing up, and it's very problematic for working parents, because most of the time, the parents are already at work by the time that the bus is supposed to come and get their children. So now, when the bus doesn't show up, the parents have to figure out a way to get their child to school if they're not old enough to walk by themselves. So I just, I just wanted to touch base and see how that is actually going to change. But hopefully, you'll be able to hire enough drivers to keep up with.
I mean, we already seen dividend in the move that we made. We had had a greater influx of candidates. Granted that it takes time to train these folks and bring them to the driver level. But what we've seen, since we published these new rates, is candidates are coming knocking at our doors. And we are fairly confident that we will be able to have enough staffing, not only to cover all the bus routes, but also to cover in case of absences as needed.
Okay. And.
But the problem, oh, Mrs. Costa, please.
Sorry, I was just going to say, and then if you, like, if it does come start of the school year, and this is a problem again going forward, and we still see this problem going into October, how can we go about, you know, if we do give you the financial aid to start with, how can we assure that our financial aid is going to make sure that this is going to correct some of these issues? Because you can't guarantee that these drivers are going to show up every day. You know, you did have hired drivers that just decided, hey, I'm not going to show up for the day, and that kind of messes you guys up, I know. But how can we rectify that situation and make sure that our money is going to give you what you need and assure us that we're going to get our students to where they need to be and on time?
Yes, it's, I totally understand where you're coming from. It's a common occurrence where we have had very high problem rate of attendance. And from past experience, one of the things that I can say is, when you hire fully staff and you have people on the bench, that allows you to weed off the bad weed and be able to keep those people who are ready to come to work every day.
Mr. Nodriani.
Chairman, if I may ask, I think that Ms. Costa's made some very valid points that the administration's discussed. And I know when talking with Dr. McGee and Mr. Perrier, it was put on the agenda, but based on what Mr. Montero said this evening, that they have secured candidates, and he's assured us that we're going to start with all of them. In light of that most recent information, I think Dr. McGee would agree in terms of our discussions, that I think it'd be appropriate to table this. And as I think you're alluding to, Ms. Costa, and based on the impression I'm getting from the committee is, we should table this, and based on the fact that Mr. Montero said, they've secured enough people to run the buses, let's see if that actually happens before the committee moves forward with making any recommendation to any enhancements in terms of compensation. If in fact, what you've stated is true, because as you noted, I've been very frustrated over the years with the service levels. But if you have indeed hired enough drivers to meet our needs and consistently transport our students on time to where they need to be, I think we will see that throughout the month of maybe September. And I think maybe the committee after September, or even maybe I would say October, the committee could revisit this potential contract amendment after we see, or we have the results proven to us that this actually occurs. Because you're right, Ms. Costa, it's been my experience in the three years that I've been responsible for overseeing transportation, that there have been some concerns. But I'm hopeful, basically. But I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful based on what you said tonight, based on the newer rates that, or new hourly rates that you've, you've posted for. If we're getting all these candidates and you're going to keep them in place, it will certainly justify looking at this in a couple of months. Would that be accurate? Mr. Montero?
It's to the discussion of the committee.
What I'm, I think what I'm suggesting is that if you're saying you've hired enough drivers to run all the routes and get the students there on time, I think it's something we could look at and see if that actually happens and then discuss doing it. That would be my suggestion to the committee.
I, I have to agree.
Anyone else? I mean, in the past, we have been very disappointed at times where the buses weren't there. And there were all kinds of good excuses or reasons why they weren't. For you to say that you've got, you've given, you're giving more money, but people are not working, people are not willing to work even though the, the money is available. So I agree with Mr. Notorianni, it's, we have to see if you're going to meet your commitments before we would approve an increase. And if we saw that, then we'd be more amenable to do that. Any other comments?
May I make a motion to table this?
We have a motion to table, to table this item, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc for the tabling, any, any comments on the tabling? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Item is tabled. Thank you very much for your report. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve amendments to the district's twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-three school year calendar, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Costa, do we have changes, Dr. McGee?
So we don't.
I guess we'll just.
We, we don't, Mr. Chairman.
So then we can vote the calendar as is, or we don't have to do anything, I think.
I, I think that's really all we need to do, I, I do. I, I had requested this agenda item be placed on the, on the agenda. However, I, I've received recently, over the last few days, some information from RIDE which would sort of dissuade me from seeking any modifications to the calendar, that, that was approved by the committee.
Okay, so we have a no item.
Caroline.
Do we need to vote on this? We have a, we have a motion and approved motion to amend, for, to approve amendments to the calendar, but there are no amendments.
Five noes. We just vote as is, right?
Vote as now. Doesn't matter.
We vote no.
There's no, nothing to approve.
Yeah, can rescind the motion.
I think, yeah, why don't we withdraw?
I make a motion to withdraw them.
Huh?
Whatever it is. Okay, so I make the motion to withdraw.
Do we need a second or not?
Second.
Done. We don't have to vote on, on a withdrawal, do we? Oh, do we?
Yes.
All in fig.
Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman.
Under withdrawal.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Spent a lot of time on this.
We did, yes, we did, and I do appreciate your patience.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the removal of certain sections of the policy handbook pertaining to personnel. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa. Mrs. Kepiscus, you want to talk about this?
I'll answer any questions, but essentially, I'll tell you what it is. We're removing policies at this point that are either a lovely preface to the policy manual that says nothing. Bylaws for the school committee that have been replaced. Job descriptions for staff, administrators and directors that are already in either collective bargaining agreements or employment contracts with those particular staff members. And our policy would, is inappropriate because it's a, an appropriate subject for collective bargaining as opposed to a policy. It discusses the organization of the school district administration using terms that we don't use anymore and describing positions we don't have anymore. It has a nepotism policy that we don't really need anymore because the school committee doesn't hire. Because that's now been given to principals, it's just not an issue for us anymore. And also has pages and pages and pages of definitions to policies that don't exist. So, because as of now, when we create a policy, if something gets you defined, it's defined directly in that policy. With the intent, just so everyone can understand, the overall intent of the policy subcommittee is to create policies that we don't have to come back to this committee every single time there's a minute change to the way we do things. We create more broad overall policies and then create specific protocols. Those protocols can be changed at any time by administration, not by having to convene the policy subcommittee and then voted on by the full school committee to avoid all the delay associated with that. So essentially, what we're doing is removing a lot of the legal gobbledygook and plain gobbledygook that was in our current policy to try to streamline it and make it easier for a parent, staff member, guardian, actually looking for a policy on the thing they have a question about, where they would expect to find it. And that's what this is, it's a good twenty-two pages gone from a very thick blue binder that we all got.
Are there any more sections to be taken out down the road?
There are, our, our legal team is looking through tho, that policy manual and is presenting to us the plan is to present to us at every policy meeting another chunk that can be removed because it's either outdated or has been replaced by actions taken by the policy subcommittee at least in the last four years since I've been here in chair policy.
And these policies, the handbook was written some time ago? I heard it, it's in middle English, Old English?
Some of it is, as I indicated, some of it predates our attorney. Some of it dates back from before, I graduated from high school in nineteen eighty-one. So it's, some of it is very, very old, very, very dated and just irrelevant. And it's just weighing down someone's ability to try to find the actual policy that they're looking for.
Any additional comments? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
And I believe that was the last item on our agenda.